Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just come from DC, that's... okay.
One tape, it better be a short meeting.
We've got one tape, alright, we're gonna have to do our best. Alright, first thing we should do is review our agenda and see if we have any changes. Everybody have a copy of it? Perfect, and if anybody in the audience would like a copy of the agenda, just help yourself. So you're gonna take off this permit? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that name kinda threw me off, I thought it was one down on the Danby-Timothy Road.
Okay, so Paul's suggesting that the Verastro access permit be removed because he can't sign it until after...
They're still not done with their project, aren't they?
Yeah, it's not completed, and I think if we remember, we had voted to just say that, you know, Paul and Charlie had the authority to sign off on that when it was done. So I don't think you need to come back to us, but we'll take it off the agenda for tonight.
That project looks really, really good.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
Okay, anybody have anything to add, or anything else to add? I'll hear a motion if anybody'd like to.
So moved.
To accept the agenda as amended, yeah. And we amended it by taking off the Verastro access permit. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. So now we have to review and correct and approve previous minutes of our last meeting. So, I'm looking for what I... the format I usually have minutes in, and I'm not seeing them. I'm not seeing it on the legal paper as usual, attached to the minutes of our last meeting, that's by note to Janice. So I guess, I guess, well, I know they were printed on front porch and, 'cause everybody had a chance to read them.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve them.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go, that's approved. I'm not sure there's a place on these to sign, so we may have to sign at a later time. 'Cause I think she needs, she usually puts it on legal paper, but why don't we just say... And the person who took those minutes was Haiti, right?
Yeah.
So we'll have to get her to sign at another time. I think it's Haiti.
Rodriguez, I think.
Garcia, now it's Garcia. I'm not sure if it's Velasquez. V-A-Z.
Hold on.
Yeah.
V-A-S-K-U-E-Z, isn't it?
I think it's V-A-Z, might be, might be. Might be V-A-S.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. I probably have it down.
Oh, I didn't know.
Find it?
Okay, did have it. I think it's just too big here.
It's probably listed under Garcia. Nope, I have it in my other computer and not here, so I can't help it. V-A-Z, V-A-S, which is up here. V-A-Z, D-U-Z, I got it right. Very good, okay, so, I'll just make notes on here. Approved. Okay, next. A report from Rutland Region Planning Meeting, Shelley Taylor and Michelle Bushy. Uh-oh. We'll skip ahead and maybe they'll come in afterwards. Delinquent tax report, Doug, would you like to be up?
Sure, I got just a couple of things. First one is from a couple of sales that we did last, a year ago. They've never redeemed the town, there was a high bidder on the properties. And they've been beaded over to the town, so now the town is in possession of these two properties. One room's Fitzgerald's, and the other is Clinton Ironman.
Clinton, okay.
I don't know if you got copies of that collector's deed or not, I know the first Fitzgerald one, I think was going to melt everybody.
I definitely got that one, I've been out of town, so I'm not sure that I've gotten the other one, but that doesn't mean...
So anyways, those two properties neither redeemed, so the town's in possession of them.
So last I heard, there was a potential buyer for Fitzgerald.
I haven't heard any more after that.
Yeah, so that's something I can follow up on. Chad knows the buyer, and he's doing some work at my house, I'll follow up with that for us. As for Clinton, that's an interesting challenge, isn't it? Because that's so much enmeshed with the other properties.
His brother from Pennsylvania actually called and was acting like he was interested in buying it.
And then it hasn't happened.
I hadn't heard anything else from him, I'll try to get that contact to him to see if he's still interested or not. I think he thinks that it was gonna be with all 14 acres, but it was a deed restriction to where it's only two acres, whatever gets divided out, so it's only two acres now.
Yeah, and didn't the rest of the acreage go to his mother?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's a family affair.
And I already contacted Kevin O'Toole to see if that was gonna be a crazy situation, something like that happen, and he's like, his brother's interested in it?
So what I'd suggest, maybe if you all feel okay about this, would be that we spend a little bit of money to ask our attorney, not Kevin, but John Thrasher, just 'cause it's no longer a delinquent tax issue, to write the brother a letter, basically telling him, move or we're going to put it on the market, which might prompt him, because I think he's the most obvious buyer. I know they want to keep it in the family, but I have a feeling that we're gonna have to make a little noise to get that to happen. How do people feel about that?
I'd recommend 30 days, otherwise we're advertising it for sale.
Yeah, that sort of thing, yep. Unless our lawyer thinks we should do 45, and then are you comfortable with whatever they advise, yeah.
Could I join the discussion here, that's what I'm here for?
So, oh, you're here for this issue?
For the issue you're discussing.
Oh, I'm, so, yes, when we open it up...
No, about the overall...
Okay, can you hang on one second?
So let me, but let me understand what it is, the overall what, the tax issues?
The foreclosure of tax properties.
Oh, okay, alright, so, yeah, give us just a minute, and yes, by all means, yeah, thank you for letting us know that that's...
I don't know the protocol here, so...
Yeah, no, and thank you, I sort of assumed you were later on the agenda and I hadn't looked down, so, and usually we have...
You want me to jump in here, or you want me to just wait?
Just, well, hold on just a minute, let's just, so anyway, that would be a suggestion for how to, you know, just see if we can move that one along, and then we can regroup with more information at our next meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
Still got people living in the trailer of Fitzgerald's?
Yes. Yes, but there's, there's a, last I heard, that there is a buyer, and that buyer was instructed to have his lawyer contact our lawyer, and I, that may have happened, I don't know. We basically said that, the question had been put to us by the potential buyer, who am I buying it from? Am I buying it from Mr. Fitzgerald, or am I buying it from the town? And the answer is the town now owns it, so he would be buying it from the town. And I wanna make sure I say this out loud for everybody to know, that in the case of something like this, the town will only get what the town is owed. Any additional money that that buyer puts forward for the value of that property would go to Mr. Fitzgerald. We do not get to make money on tax sales, and it's very important that people know that. So if there's a buyer, Mr. Fitzgerald will benefit from that. Because as I understood, this buyer wasn't looking to just get a tax deal, he was willing to pay fair market price for this piece of property. So there may be a solution in the works there, and I can check on that one. As for the other one, I'm not sure what, the solution that is the potential, the brother from Pennsylvania, is that Jonathan? Yes, that would strike me as the most likely solution there, so let's see if we can communicate with Jonathan.
My only thing on it would be, why couldn't Doug just write the letter? Instead of paying the lawyer, I mean, Doug knows the ins and outs of selling these properties, seems though he could write a letter. It'd take, what, 10 minutes for you to type one up and...
Well, we can do that first, oftentimes people don't respond unless it comes from a lawyer, but by all means, what, this is...
Doug sends them a letter, they don't respond, you advertise it.
Yeah, yeah, well...
Yeah.
And a certified letter, so that you can prove that you did it.
Yeah, well, that's fine, so, you know, tell them that, you know, that we understand they were interested, but we need to know what their intentions are within 30 days, or we're gonna move to dispose of the property. I think, I think that's fine, but let's hope that he, in the meantime, I think I do know how to reach Jonathan, so I can try also to rattle his cage a little bit. Does anybody know if Mrs. Ironman's still around?
She is.
She is, because I know she was very interested in seeing it stay in the family, so maybe I should call her too. So, but I, you know, I think that in, when this whole thing came to pass with the tax sale, nothing happened until it came to the actual moment of crisis, so I think we have to create that crisis moment in order for something to happen.
Should that be sent, registered mail?
Yeah, or certified, yeah.
Certified?
Yes. Yeah, that way we have a track record. No, that's fine with me, yeah, alright. I'm not sure that we need a vote on that, it's just sort of a process we're gonna do, so if you'd please do that, that'd be great.
Also, another thing is, I had two more tax sales scheduled for July 6th.
July 6th, and that is Wales?
Wales and the Shirley Roberts property.
Ah, that's the little blue house past the Four Corners on the left?
It's on Green Hill, it's from a year, it's a Ridge customer from a year ago.
Oh, 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 the trailer.
You had the Sheriff's.
Yeah, and this has happened multiple times, and she's redeemed?
Always redeemed.
Always redeemed, yeah, yeah, okay.
Both of them same thing before.
And Wales is always redeemed, okay, so...
Actually, he pays off before the sale, he gets here a couple days before usually, but...
Yeah.
So we got those two scheduled for July 6th, I think it just might make sure.
Okay.
July 9th.
July 9th, okay, and so then the question before us is that if nobody else shows up to bid, does the town want to bid on those properties, right? So, we can discuss that, but maybe this is the juncture to hear what's on Donald's mind.
Overall, it's just the process of the tax sales, foreclosure sales, it's, like, when I'm hearing you discuss it yourself, it seems like the board is trying to place people to purchase some properties, you see what I mean? Like being a real estate agent, so to speak. In other words, I got into this because I had a friend that was interested in the Fitzgerald property.
Oh.
And I didn't know the procedure to have him, what to contact, how it's, the transparency of it, and the procedure. And then I found out, I heard from someone, that Lynn had someone lined up for the property.
So Lynn doesn't have anybody lined up for the property? I was approached by somebody, just like you could've approached me, that said, if I'm interested, what is the process? And we told them about the process.
Okay, that's all I heard was Lynn.
Yeah, no, I had an interest in the property.
Right, right, approached you, so, but, you know, all of a sudden, it was, it felt like I was like, I couldn't get involved in, you know, approaching anybody in the...
Let's tell you the process, so that you know for the future. So the way this works is that the town of Danby, and please, if I'm incorrect, jump in, anybody, so, and Doug especially. So, you know, when people fail to pay their taxes, and it's usually for multiple years in a row, and if they have, or they're repeat offenders...
Let me ask you, Jack, just, how many years do you got, what's the mandated?
Well, there's, I don't, well, let's let Doug answer that.
It's actually, I've got a policy that says that if you don't have, if you don't have a payment plan in place within 60 days, you'll be considered...
Of being delinquent?
Of being delinquent, so if you don't have a payment plan in place within 60 days, you'll be reviewed, you know, on a case-to-case basis.
But it sounds like the amounts that these people are owing for back taxes is quite, you know...
Well, much less so than it was before.
It's pretty high, yeah.
When, when, there was a period of time when Danby did not do this, and many properties had gone for multiple, multiple years. We're not letting them go for very many years now.
We're still trying to actually get caught up, there's still a few out there.
There's a few.
I understand, so they're trying to catch up, but, like, you know, some of the properties, like 30,000 on the Fitzgerald, they're, that's quite a number of years, it's probably a decade or so more.
Yeah, probably.
And, so, overall, I think the board, I was suggesting to the board, that you have a detailed...
We do, we'd be happy to give you a copy.
Protocol of what happens at the properties.
Yeah.
And also starting with how it's advertised, because hardly anybody knows about advertising, having no one show up at auctions...
Okay, so, again, let me...
If I could finish, can I just finish, please?
Donald, no, I'd like to interrupt for a minute. Doug, can you provide for him the written policy about the, you know...
Can I give you a copy of the policy?
No.
I will, I have a policy, but when they get turned over to a collections attorney, then it's out of my hands, even, I'm turning it over to the attorney. So he does all the advertising through who he wants? Once I turn it over, it's out of my hands totally.
But can't the board have a say in that?
No, and all the advertising is done according to statute. So it's a whole legal statute, and it is extensive, and everything has to be signed off, letters have to be certified...
But I'm talking about the advertising and overall, where, because, where...
So we advertise in three locations.
One thing in life that's changed, and we're in the, you know, the time now is that we're electronic...
Sure.
Media and so forth, everybody says, oh, we advertise in the Rutland Herald, but how many people get the Rutland Herald, you know?
So we advertise in the Rutland Herald, the Manchester News Guide, and the...
That's recent, though, the Manchester...
And the Manchester Journal, I guess, are the three, I'm trying to remember the three print ones that we do. But do we also post on Front Porch Forum?
We should.
What do we have in mind when the property comes for a sale?
Right.
It's like I say, when I turn it over to Kevin O'Toole, they're going under in my hands, it's totally in his hands.
Can that be promulgated by the board to have him include the Front Porch Forum?
If he's not already, yes. One of the things that we find, Donald, I don't know if you know this, but we usually have, a lot of investors show up for these tax sales, so people are finding out.
Everybody's wanting to be transparent, and we want to get the, I found out recently, there was a list of investors. I had no idea, I've been living here 20 years now.
On down.
I've been around here a lot, I've been asking, I've been, you know, it's like, there's no transparency, you have to dig, dig, dig to find...
So I think what I'm struggling, what I'm struggling with, Donald, is you saying there's no transparency. I really appreciate any suggestions to improve the process.
Well, I'm saying, electronic, Front Porch Forum would be a start.
Okay, so...
That would get to a wide range more than the News Guide and the Rutland Herald and...
I think that we'll find, when we talk to Kevin, that there's already a wide range too, and there's nothing wrong with adding one, but it's not, it's not a secret.
Right, exactly.
You know, none of these are secret, it's widely out.
No, 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 but further expand it, because it's, it's sort of like sheltered, in my opinion.
I realize that's your opinion, but there's a lot of people who show up, yeah.
Irregardless, I think we should actually, you know, expand it further than even the ones we're discussing, but I'll go with Front Porch Forum for electronic, media.
Well, if you have other suggestions other than Front Porch, it's fine, we certainly, it's in our interest to advertise it as widely as possible, and to get as many people bidding on those properties, it's in our interest, and it's in the interest of the taxpayers who are losing their homes, because then they may get more value for their home, and they may have more money to walk away with and...
Right, so right now, like, I'm just saying, the past auctions, you had two, you had two auctions where the town had to purchase the properties...
So that's not, that's not unusual.
Two, two, no one showed up for it, that's telling me that it's not widely advertised.
Well, there are people here that showed up for them, they just don't want to bid on those properties.
Right.
Okay, I heard there was only like...
We're getting plenty of people show up for them, it's just it depends...
I heard differently, but...
Totally depends on the properties.
Okay, so anyway, alright, so I'm saying, the towns should really start, have a written, you know, how the procedure has...
We have a written procedure.
In detail, like, and add the Front Porch Forum, that's all I'm asking, to have, in the towns and the citizens' best interest.
Yep.
And getting back to the Fitzgerald property, you know...
Well, as I said, appears that that still might be available, so if you're still interested, the process would be?
I had someone else interested in the property.
Would you like to know the process?
Yes.
So what you would want that person to do is to engage a lawyer, because they'll have to be making an offer. The way it has to be structured is that this deal has to be structured to pay off the town, and then the balance of the money, you know, that the owner will get. So essentially, the sale has to go through the town's attorney, which is John Thrasher, and so their attorney should contact John Thrasher. So they should make an offer, you know, John Thrasher, and go through that, so that's, that would be the process. So if you have an interest, that would be...
That's the town attorney, what's his name again?
John Thrasher, T-H-R-A-S-E-R.
Is that on the website, the Danby website?
It is, and his...
T-H-R-E-S-E-R?
T-H-R-A-S-H-E-R, and his number is 394-9944.
Okay. And, so I had someone interested, and then I was, I told him, like, I heard from someone around here, no names, that, you know, you were in contact with Chad, and that...
Well, Chad had, Chad knows somebody who was interested, that's all I know. And I'm not, honestly, Donald, this swinging stuff, it's just inappropriate.
What's that saying, Anne?
You're talking about things that aren't factual, and I'm gonna call you on that, so unless you want to sit here and argue, it's not factual.
No, 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 you admitted earlier, Lynn, you did admit earlier that you had someone that you know, Chad, that's interested in the property.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do with me, Donald, I'm not...
Right, but why would it go to you?
Because I'm the chair of the select board, the same reason you could come to me, or you could go to any of us. And Chad happened to come to me because I know Chad.
Right, you know him, but that might be a conflict of interest.
There is no conflict of interest if I don't have any ownership in the land, no family owns the land, no...
No, 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 you're a government employee, and you can't have any, no, 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 let's just, we're having a discussion here.
You're wasting our time, there is no conflict of interest.
You know about 24 VSA 1994?
There's no conflict of interest here.
You can't, you can't promulgate, discuss anything with someone that is gonna purchase a property in town.
That's why I referred them to the lawyer.
Right.
The same thing I just did for you, and I'm not gonna discuss this further if you're thinking of purchasing a property in town, so let's move on.
Yeah, we'll move on to the next.
Um...
I got the appearance, Tom, and what's the last name?
McColligan, M-C-O-L-G-A-N.
Just so you guys don't forget, we do need to decide this.
On Wales, yeah.
So anyway, I just wanted to say, there should be a set protocol written out.
We've moved on. We've taken your suggestion, and we've moved on, thank you, so...
You don't want to take a vote on that, or...
No, not right now, we have another matter we're discussing. So public comment, Donald, is usually, it's reserved for when we ask for it, that's the process here.
Right.
And usually, we're very open to it, but when people are, you know, disruptive and argumentative, it's hard to allow it constantly.
I'm not disruptive, Lynn.
I would like you to please, I'm asking you as the chair, like, you're...
Wait, wait, settle down, please settle down.
Alright, so, we need to decide about Wales and Shirley Roberts. So Wales is easy, I mean, why the heck wouldn't we? You know, I mean, there's value there.
It could be honestly a headphone call, a lot of interest on both.
Oh, really?
But I really hope that Donald has to get either of them in case, you know, just in case.
Well, the only thing that comes to mind is that, you know, on a property like Wales, there's tremendous value there. You're right, there are gonna be other investors, and we both know that he's gonna probably pay, he always pays.
I think almost guaranteed.
Almost guaranteed, so I think that, I would say, yes, we should be prepared to vote on that one, you know, to bid on that one if we had to. And the only reason I wonder about the other property is, I'm just not sure, is there resale value there, is it, is it? But if you've got other investors, there probably is.
Yeah, I think that it was appraised, the appraised value was 89.
Okay.
It's one acre of land, the town was the bidder on it the last time around, and this year redeemed, so... And that was multiple years that time, this time it's two years, and it isn't like five years that it was left there.
Actually, I remember when that one went up for bid, Kevin O'Toole was trying to advise everybody in the room to bid on it, they said, he said it would be a great buy. That's right.
I wasn't liking seeing the town bid on it, but it worked out, it worked out, so, we're good.
Yeah, and she's redeemed how many times?
I would have to look back, it was in a few times, four counts, four, I'm guessing.
Anybody see any reason not to vote on those?
I think you have an idea what the minimum bid on that property's gonna be for, just so you know, I guess, we're only $1,4400.
For, oh, it was $7,000 last time.
It was multiple years last, it was two years at the time, so we're talking $4,400.
Okay. No, that's for Roberts.
That's gonna be the minimum bid on it.
Yeah, Wales is what's closer to 15, 30, is it 30 again?
Five, seven.
Three, five, seven.
Three, five thousand, seven hundred?
I swear I felt like we just did that yesterday. Can't be, here, can't be, dang it. Well, I would love to entertain a motion to authorize, well, and also, we should decide who can be there on July 9th. We would need to authorize somebody.
I've been here before doing it, so I just won't do it again.
Can you do it, that'd be great.
Is it 10 still?
10, yeah.
And what day of the week's the 9th?
9th.
9th, I think it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday's the 9th.
So that's good for you, okay, great, I'll do it. Alright, Paul do it if we authorize him, do we authorize him?
So I'll make the motion that we let Paul bid on it, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, um, let's see, we're up to road commissioner's report.
Alright, got a few things. Not sure, I was absent the last meeting, did Jesse Powell get recognition for a cleanup day?
I, you know what, I don't believe this he did.
I had it, if I don't put it on here...
No, I know that we didn't mention it, anything at our last meeting, and we should put something on the record to, yes.
I want to thank Jesse and his crew for doing all the cleanup, I'm picking up all the stuff.
Jesse and, and, and Chris, please add, it's Jesse and Smokey House.
And Smokey House.
Let's get Smokey House a little credit for that in the community.
Okay, that's down.
Thank you for remembering that. Thank you, Jesse, if you're watching, yay.
Okay, the speed cart that's been in town, it got moved from down here, across from the office, it went to Easy Street, and Dave just texted me yesterday saying that, or Captain Fox, I know him too well, so I gotta, uh... They moved it to Easy Street, 'cause Easy Street and Collin Hill are the next ones to get done. And he asked me where they want it positioned, up at Collin Hill, so I figured the best place is right there, just that, between Melons, John Titels and Victor's, there's a pull-off right there.
Yeah.
And to put it there, and they usually leave it there a week to 10 days. The speed cart does clock every car with the speeds.
It clocks them before they slow down.
Yeah, I'm not sure how far, he's supposed to send me a report, so I can see what it looks like, but that's where the speed cart is now, I guess, 'cause I haven't been up that road.
That's what I didn't understand, I was thinking, how do you know if people are regularly speeding if you put something up so that they'll all slow down? But I'm getting it now.
Well, when you pull off Danby Hill Road, I'm usually, when you pull down like 7, 8 miles an hour to slow down, it's already got you clocked.
Yeah, it's, it clocks you from far enough back that people are getting reported before they slow down.
Yeah, but I don't know if it does it average, or what, but I'll find out once I, he's supposed to send me a report, then the whole report, once all three of them are done, will come to us. Okay.
It clocks pedestrians too, it got me for walking 7 miles an hour on Easy Street.
I'm impressed.
I don't know when it picks up metal, or your plate, or your...
I think motion.
7 miles an hour.
Try it, man.
You weren't walking, you were running.
Alright, I'm gonna jump, jump ahead here, the guide rails that we discussed...
Yes.
On High Bridge, I wasn't happy that they left them short, what I considered short, and Steve, all of us that drive that up through there. So we put up the block bear cage to stop anybody from going into Brook. We finally, after six months, got him down here last Thursday. And they're gonna extend the one to the south on the west end towards Four Corners, they're gonna, all they can do is go 37 and 1/2 feet, 'cause the section's coming, 12 and 1/2 foot sections.
So is that 37 and 1/2 feet from where it is now?
From where it is now, they're gonna take that, they have to put an anchor in, or anchor in the ground, concrete, and then, so that stops the vehicles. And so they're gonna just start it up and come up and put another anchor in. And on the other side, where we put a couple of blocks, we can only go up 25 feet, because the ditch starts and there's no place to put an anchor in then. I tried to see if we could get it extended on the east side, but... I tried to see if we could get it extended on the east side, but she explained it to me that there was too much, because of the pitch of the road, there's too much area before you get to the bridge, or the Brook, and she said they, they wouldn't allow it, so I said, I'll, I'll take two out of three. But I asked them why they cut it short, she says, somebody told us they piled snow there.
Somebody.
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 Charlie looks at me, I look at him, I'm like, well, it wasn't these two somebodies, but she thought we just pushed the snow up there, for what reason, I, I don't have a clue, but anyways.
Anyway, they're gonna pay for it, yeah.
Uh, they didn't come right out and say, they, I assumed they said they were, they would take care of it, they said, and said, don't plant on it right off, 'cause they're busy. So, he said, if you get it in by next Veterans Day, when they finish it, um, I said, as long as it gets done, so.
In the meantime, do we have an issue with our blocks?
Somebody hits them, yes.
So what's better, letting people go into the stream and die?
Well, that's it, you know. Yeah, but it is a liability issue, but it's a safety issue also. So, take them down, somebody's gonna dump the Brook. So, it suggests we, nobody's hit them yet, leave them up.
It's an interesting conundrum, isn't it? You try to protect somebody and then you're responsible, but if we don't, and, and, and the likelihood of life injuries are much greater.
Yeah, that's why we didn't, Charlie and I didn't inspect it, because these guys are engineers, but, okay. All right, on to, I gotta collect my notes here.
Yeah.
High Bridge, okay.
Steve, you comfortable with leaving them there?
I wouldn't move them.
No?
'Cause at this point in time, if we move them and somebody goes off, we're still liable.
Yep.
If anybody's concerned about it, we can go up there with the excavator and try and change it a little bit.
Can we move them a little further back?
But you gotta be careful on the one side, or you're gonna be right in the ditch.
You're gonna be right in the ditch. That's why they can only go two sections of twenty-five feet.
And your only other option would, on that one side, would be to turn them, but then if you hit them, you're, the way they are now, if somebody hits it, they got a chance of skipping off, if you turn them flat across that ditch, they're gonna stop them.
Yeah, all right.
All right, um, we are behind on grading our roads, um, we've been spot grading on, more problem areas that if people call in, we go check on it, get them done, we get the high-traveled ones more, but it's all due, we have three grants that have to be done that are, we're getting paid for, and they have to be done July, by July first.
And let's, so let's just review, so people know what those are, so that's, that's the big Culvert project on Danby Mountain Road, right?
Yeah, that one hasn't got started yet.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Lily Hill, Culvert, and Ditchin', and right now, we've been working for, whatever stop, well, we've been pretty good on Calvin Hill, they've gone all the way from Calvin Hill top and they're gonna break down through to the bottom.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and I expect that Brad's been up and looked at it and they're doing a great, great job on it, so.
And the issue is that when we get grants, they have time sensitivities and we have to do them in the time that we have the grant, or we lose the money.
Yep, so.
So we're kinda asking people to bear with us.
From the grading, but, um, we're just trying to get them spot graded, just to keep the, you know, keep them calm down and hopefully.
Are you still thinking of sending Glory to a grading school?
I mentioned it and, um, I'm still waiting to hear when the next one's open.
Yeah.
And she'll be due up here in two weeks for ninety days.
Well, that's right.
Which I've already got recommendations from the, the other two road guys that they definitely want her to stay on board.
All right, good.
So.
Although we should do that, we should do that in executive session, so.
I believe everybody out, so.
We should probably, we should probably call an executive session to deal with that employee e-mat- matter at some point, um, so it's up in two weeks, could that, could that executive session, I wonder, wait till our next board meeting or not, we?
Uh, before that, 'cause I think she got hired on April first.
Yeah, well.
April, May, and.
We could maybe slide it under some other business tonight and just do it, and we haven't warned it, but it's executive session anyway.
But I haven't talked to her if she wants to stay, I assume she does, she seems to be happy with it.
So why don't you talk to her and if we have, we'll, we'll, yeah, okay, yeah, I hope so. Yes, so, um, so this we can say without it being an executive session, so anytime we make a hire, there's a ninety-day, um, oh, what's the word I'm looking for, help?
Trial period.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a ninety-day probation period where, where either party, you know, can look at the other and scratch their heads and say, yeah, and, uh, and so we need to, um, circle back to her, 'cause it's coming up on ninety days, which is great, yeah, that's great. So I think the record could just say that, that the ninety, the ninety-day trial period for our new, um, road crew employee will be ending in two weeks and that the, the select board will be addressing that in executive session in the future. Anytime there in hiring issues, there in executive session of their personnel, so.
So I'm back to the grading quick, just bear with us, and if we've got real bad spots, like we had, um, Baker Brook last week, um, actually, we got to it Monday, I think, and then it rained the night after and it all turned to slime, which, so we're caught in between, you know, trying to get them graded in between rainstorms and we're just doing the best we can and we'll hopefully get caught up here sometime. I think that's.
How about paving, I remember you mentioned that to me.
Yeah, the paving, we still, I think, I saw on the agenda there, or something, there's, how much money we're getting for a grant that we can use.
Oh, we've got signed grants and, in Grants and Aid Program application, but that must be for next year.
Okay, so, yeah, Charlie's supposed to get in touch with Janice to find out how much, we did get an extra grant and I think it was for, I can't remember, it was quite a sizable amount over a ninety-three thousand, which hopefully would take in the Danby-Timothy Road from the Four Corners store up past your turn and up towards Doug's, even with the Bowmagon, so that's the only way we can really do that, make it hold up, 'cause I, I talked to Tommy last year and he said, if you just pave over the top, it's just gonna bust apart again. So hopefully with that extra grant money, and I will find out how much extra it is and then sit down with Tommy and find out. I think it was with Bowmagon, we could only do with ninety-three thousand a half a mile versus a mile regular paving.
So here is a, um, Highway Class Two grant, and this looks like the kind of thing that,
I thought it said down there.
Amount awarded this action, a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
That's the one, isn't it, Doug?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was a plus our ninety-three thousand.
Yeah, well, that wasn't clear to me, when we budgeted the ninety-three, was that tax money that we were raising for, it wasn't that we were planning on ninety-three?
That's what our normal budget had been over the years.
Is that, is that absolutely sure it wasn't that we were planning on that ninety-three from coming in from a?
That's just, that's what we wanted everyone to use for.
And those are tax dollars, so what we, we then essentially have is the hundred and seventy-five plus ninety-three?
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe we can.
Oh, that'd be nice. Then they could really pick up and speed down across the block.
What's our, what's our timeframe on this grant, let's take a look at that, because?
It's a thirty-month and it began July first of twenty nineteen, so thirty-month.
Would our hope be that, that we would, um, contract this out this, before fall, before winter?
It'd be nice.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, um, okay, remind me, we have to sign that when we get there. Anything else, or, 'cause that's next up, we can just move into that one. Sign Grants in Aid Program, oh, Program Application, that's this one. So this looks like a new, uh, application for a grant, so this is not a grant award, this is an application. And, uh, they invite your municipality to participate in the munis, munis, I can't say that, Municipal Roads Grants in Aid Program, um, let's see, DC Al's a hundred thousand dollars for purchasing equipment for communities that have the majority of their land base in the White River, Otter Creek and Southern Lake Champlain watersheds. I think we count a Southern Lake Champlain, maybe, I don't know, I mean, because of the Otter Creek, I mean, we're Otter Creek watershed and we feed, that feeds, river flows north. I don't know that it flows to the southern part of the lake, I mean, they may be talking about, you know, Paltany area or Fairhead, or you know.
Well, the Otter Creek goes into the lake up by Virgin's.
Up by Virgin's, but I don't know, that's not really the southern part of the lake, so I'm not sure exactly what they mean, but, um, let's see. So that's just the boilerplate, let's see if they filled something out here, so we, legislative body of certify that the municipality will construct one or more road best management practices to bring connected road segments into full compliance with municipal roads general permit, construct the road BMPs on hydrologically connected road segments, consult with Regional Planning Commission prior to construction of the BMPs to conduct a required site visit, post a clean water project signed during construction and provide minimum twenty percent local match, um, so I guess what's not totally clear to me is what exactly the project would be, but maybe I haven't looked at the right page, um, estimate number, estimated hours of equip per use, it's blank, estimated road miles improved, it's blank, are we being asked to sign a blank application? Please indicate by checking one of the boxes below, the anticipated project completion date. Uh, so, I am absolutely stymied, so what I usually understand of, you know, if, when, when you sign a grant request, is that there is a specific request for a specific project, this is the letter from the Planning Commission outlining the opportunity, this is the application, but it has not been filled out.
That's our planning committee, right?
Um, this is Rutland Regions.
A Rutland Region, okay.
Yeah, and then, but this is, so, so it's basically saying that we would do this, um, I guess.
Is that one of Grants and Aid?
Yeah, is this the?
Grants and Aid is the one they're doing on Calvin Hill right now, now is that one they've been signed or is this part of it?
This, we, let's look at the date on this, for when these monies are available, I think it's fiscal year twenty twenty. Vermont's Regional Planning Commissions invite your municipality to participate in municipal roads again, so the date of this is May thirty, two thousand and nineteen, funding for, D says aside, two point nine million to support, in addition, um, your municipality must return signed letter by July third to be eligible. So I, you know, I think this is, I think we just fill it out and say that we would agree to these things, um, and then I think we would then have to come up with a specific project, um, because we don't have project information for your reference, do not return the letter of intent, ah, there we go, this is a letter of intent, it's not the specific, I don't mind signing a letter of intent that we intend to apply, does that make sense? Sorry, if I'd read it ahead of time and wasn't driving from Washington from the airport.
Busy.
Yeah, um, please indicate by checking one of the boxes below, the anticipated project completion date for planning purposes only, well, that's good, um, I would say we would wanna give ourselves till twenty twenty, wouldn't you, since we've got so many on the plate right now? Um, all right, so we would need a motion to, um, authorize a letter of intent to apply for the Grants and Aid money. Hang on a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, and it looks like they would like all of our signatures, so I'll pass it around. Uh, what's today's date, is today the fourteenth, oh, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Is there a short title to that?
Yes, let me get it for you. So Grants dash in dash aid program. Yep, it's Municipal Roads Grants and AIDS Program, Letter of Intent. Yep, I'm happy to, do you wanna take a look at it, to pull anything else off of it, or? Although, yeah, just hand it back so folks can sign it afterwards. Next up, uh, signed class, oh, go ahead.
Is that the Timoth road?
This one, oh, sign, the, this is signed Class Two roadway agreement, uh, from DOT for Timoth Road, so that's this one. Um, so this is the hundred and, um, all right, so this is the hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, if we're gonna change where we're, are we gonna change where we're working?
I gotta find out from Tom if that total money is feasible to, I think we should do as much as we can on it anyways, even if we can't get the whole way, if we can get.
Where did we, when we wrote this grant request, where did we say we would be paving?
Well, we had to get four different places.
Oh, okay, so as long as we're, I just don't want us, I don't know how, how much we're held.
We put in for four in case we get denied.
Timoth Road, yep.
Yep.
Um, yeah, the whole project was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um. So, um, so there's, that might be some of the information you're looking for, Paul, um, so the estimate on the whole project was two hundred and eighty-nine, we have a hundred and seventy-five plus ninety-three.
Put it close.
We have two hundred and sixty-eight, so, um, and is there a match on this? Let's just see. Awards details, amendment cancellation, uh, now previously awarded hundred and seventy-five total amount, vendor grantee, zip, zip, matching kind, twenty percent, so we have to come up with twenty percent of that hundred and seventy-five, quick, quick, that'd be seventeen-five times two, right, about thirty-four thousand? When you're usually the math politician, I think that's right.
Close.
Yeah, I think it's seventeen-five times two, right, so thirty-four, thirty-five thousand. Yeah, so, um, in special projects, what did we have in our budget? Thanks for being here, Doug. Well, I usually bring my budget, but I came, I didn't, I didn't stop at home.
Wouldn't our match be coming out of the ninety-three that we're budgeting for the?
Sure it would, why wouldn't it, good point, that's true, that's our match, more than, more than enough match, we don't need to draw it from, from there. Yeah, as long as we're applying it to the same section of the road, and we can work out those details. But I think we also have some additional, 'cause we had budgeted things for matches in addition to that or other.
Right, but we're also anticipating different projects for the.
Yeah.
What'd you say, Steve, that road would just go as far as we can and get as much, much as we can?
Take that and the ninety-three and go as far as we can.
Yep.
All right, so, um.
Hope Tom works with us like he has in the past.
Yeah.
So would we entertain an motion to accept the grant and sign the grants agreement?
I'll make the motion.
There we go, second?
One second.
Very good, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, um, subrecipient, town of Danby, it looks like. Oh, yeah, they always do that to me. Uh, I got it, six, thirteen, okay, let me just make sure there's no place else we have to sign often times, there is, all right. Um, so the name of this is the Town Highway Class Two Roadway Program, um.
Timoth Road.
It's Timoth Road, actually, um, so it's a, it's a, it's a grant agreement, I can give you the grant number if we wanna be really sure minutes have it, the grant number is P as in Peter, zero, one, nine, zero, four. Actually, we should go by those grant numbers, sometimes we get confused as to which one we're talking about, I know Charlie does, and actually, and that's how I keep them straight with my work, I just always refer to the grant number. Do, when they're, when they're doing these projects and the invoices come in, do they refer to the grant number, so we're keeping track of it in the billing?
I do, I, I can.
Yeah, that's the only way you can keep track.
I don't understand that and you know the way you track it.
Yeah.
Well, we've got ten thousand and, uh, if, if we do have to take it out of special projects, if we have to go an extra few hundred feet to finish that, roll up, okay?
Yeah, good.
If we have to.
Yeah, although we might need some of that for match on some of those other projects, we'll have to just see how we, how it turns out. We'll have to just see how we, how it turns out.
I almost think that when we get budgets of those, we put enough for that match in the capital projects.
I think you're right. That was the, that's why, that's, yes, that's why that line's so low, is that we put it in the capital projects. That's right. And we were trying to turn that all into just one general capital projects.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, so we should, we should be, we should be okay. Only reason I'm a little bit is that we still do have to work out how much we've got to pay FEMA back. I don't think we know that bottom line. I think it's around 15,000. So that'll be. So Class II roadway agreement, that brings us to town office renovations. You and Bob met.
Yes, so...
Actually, you and I met, then you and Bob met.
Exactly. So the, the committee's working hard. Our plan of attack is to do the windows, fix the slate on the roof, do the outside painting as far as the trim around the roof is concerned, and the texture 111 or the siding that's on the vault. And then begin on the carpentry project, which would address whether or not the beams in the attic need more work or not. They have been scabbed with fairly new lumber, so that was done not too recently, and it appears that they're stable. We are shopping around right now for carpenters. I've contacted some of our local people who unfortunately are too busy to handle it or retired and not taking on more work. And I have two people coming on Monday as far as carpenters are concerned. The plan will be to do this room first, moving the listers down to Nichols Store and the select board for meetings down to 34 North Main Street, and...
Both those sites were volunteered for no cost.
Volunteered for no cost, thank you. And what we'd like to do is take that 30-foot closet that runs along the front of the building there, turn this door right here, about four or five feet back into the food pantry, so people coming into the food pantry don't disturb functions that are going on in the offices, and then open up the rest of it. So that adds more space there. It lets the window on the front of the building let in light. There's baseboard radiation in the closet, which is kind of a waste. Why are we heating the closet when we could be using that to heat the room?
What do we do about a bathroom?
Well, that's what we still have to discuss.
Okay.
And also, the repointing of the mortar, ready to recommend on that also. That's something that's critical, and that's part of the problem why especially cold air is coming in with the windows.
So the carpentry project, starting with this room, so I'm assuming that, well, the carpentry projects would be both shoring up the beams if it needs to be, anything in the, in the roof, and then also, I'm assuming the flooring and the sub...
The floors, right.
And subflooring, because we have choice in things there that we think are rotten. So I'm just wondering, so you have a couple of people that are going to be looking at Typically, I would know what the job was, and I would say something like, you know, we're going to completely replace the subfloor and whatever, and I'd be getting quotes and price for that body of work. Do we have a body of work that we're asking them to bid on, or are we asking them to look at it and assess what needs to do?
Exactly. We're looking at them to assess and tell us what they feel is necessary.
Okay.
And then we'll take those estimates and we'll say, well, we've got three people saying that this is what has to be done or however.
So, so really, the first step is that we're looking to develop expertise and consensus on what needs to be done, is that? And then we'll worry about the cost.
And we need a vapor barrier over the earth that's below us.
I got so confused by vapor barriers, I'm not even going to go there.
Okay, well, so...
I mean, I'm going to leave it to other people. I, I have so many people tell me a vapor barrier is, they did a vapor barrier and then the building rotted. I just, I, I've never been able to make sense of the science of that. It just doesn't work for me, so I'll leave it to better heads than mine.
Okay, so we're kind of taking the easy ones first, and I've had quotes on the seven big windows and the two attic windows, and the, the best quote was from Portland Glass. It will be $4,776 to replace all seven of the big windows and $1,179.60 to do the two attic windows. These are vinyl windows. They will look exactly like the windows that we have now.
With the mullion in the mill?
Mm-hmm. And they have a lifetime guarantee, so if a rock bounces off the dump truck and smashes the window, they don't care, they'll come and replace it.
Double painted? I mean, are they insulated windows?
Yes. They furnish and install seven Harvey double hung windows, replacement windows, white vinyl, low E energy star glass, half screens, one vertical divider in each sash to simulate existing look. Windows carry an exclusive Portland Glass lifetime warranty, including glass.
I'd like to add that when you tighten up this building, that you're going to have to go by these specifications for air changes per hour for the indoor air pollution. I'd be aware of that, the board is...
That's a concept I've never heard before. Can you tell me more about it?
According to ASHRAE.
What is ASHRAE?
It's an organization, it's an acronym.
Yeah, what is it?
And if you go into the, it's mechanical engineering, and it states that once you trim up the envelope of the building, tighten it up, so to speak, we're talking, you're talking about here, I'm just jumping in here, that there's so many, depending on the type of building, there's so many air changes an hour you have to provide. So you're going to have to change the mechanical system. It can't just be the heat or, you know, just, if you look into it, you'll see, it's been a while since I got into that book and studied it. That's for the indoor air pollution for the occupants. Depending on the building, if it's a public, community building, there'll be a rate per hour, approximately four, I think it is, if I'm correct, for about 30 years.
Okay, well, we can look into that.
Something we'll get to.
A building still has to have windows.
Well, right, it still has to have windows, and, and it may be that if we look back at what the architects had done, that they may refer to this standard, and that might help us do some research on it. So, thank you for bringing it up, Bill. And it's A-S-H-R-A?
E at the end.
A-S-H-R-E. Do you know what it stands for?
Association of Heating, Association of, at that effect.
Okay.
Sheet metal and ASHRAE standards are...
So it's sort of an HVAC sort of standard?
Yes, and it's a, it's a mandated throughout the country. It's a national standard they go by for certain buildings and the occupants and the...
Mm-hmm. It may be, it may be that we looked into that, that everything else about our building is so not tight that it's not an issue. I'm not sure.
But it is because it's really, you know, loose right now. I could imagine the bills you pay for the energy.
Oh, yes. It's a problem. Yeah, okay, all right.
So I would like to make a motion to sign the, call it, to sign the contract with Portland Glass to replace the windows.
And you, and you did get other bids as well, that was...
I did.
Yeah.
And they were about $1,000.
So your committee met and they decided that this is the best, okay, yeah. Now, at one point, you were emphatic that we could save these windows, but you've, you've shifted...
Well, since we can get something that looks exactly like them, what I was emphatic about is I didn't want to see something happen like what happened in Rutland City Public Schools, where they took out the big old windows and they filled it in with some kind of brown concrete and put in windows that lasted about five years before they fell apart.
And you ruined the whole aesthetics of the outside of the building.
And they slid down and whatnot.
Yeah.
I'm all set with it.
Yeah, I'll make, entertain a motion.
How many bids do we need to have?
So typically, we would, we, so our policy is that we want three bids, and we have three bids?
The glass shop did not come through with their bid, but we have the other one from...
So we, we asked for three bids and we only were able to get two?
Could I ask the figure again for the windows? What was it?
Altogether, it was 5,000.
55, is that what you're saying?
That's a very good price.
I, I'm, it's, that's why my reaction to it is sort of like, oh, it's a little...
And the payback over time.
Yeah. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Do I have a second?
I made a motion.
Motion, second, to accept the bid from Portland Glass to, for replacement windows. Now, they are not, they're not putting the windows in, these are just...
Yes, this is installed.
That was installed price.
Are you sure this isn't one of those things that's too good to be true?
No. The other one is also installed, but it's 6299.
Pardon?
Nigerian windows.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Nigerian windows.
Nigerian windows, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, no, it's, so they do the installation, they're not doing the trim work on the outside, though, that we, in other words, is there trim work on the outside?
There, yeah, they will make it fit.
They will make it fit in the existing casement, right?
Right. And I, I would like to either talk to them or the carpenter. My recommendation, because there are two trim boards that come down on the side, my recommendation would be to replace the wood with the new PVC. It's a, you know, it looks like wood, but it's not, it's plastic.
Yeah.
And it will not rot.
No, it's very practical and very ugly.
No, you can't tell the difference at all. It has to be painted. That's what I've put on the front of my house where there was rotting wood.
And it'll be there long after where the rest of us are gone.
That's, that's the truth.
And if there's nothing else pressing, I've got to get to the airport.
I need a vote.
You're flying out. I just flew in.
No, I'm not flying out, I'm picking people up that just landed.
Oh, okay. They could have come with me.
I need a vote.
Yeah, we need a vote for the Portland Glass. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
So if you, yeah. If you will sign that, I will move on to the next part of it. We have a proposal from Paul Short to replace the broken and bad slates on the roof at $30 per slate. You and I looked at the back.
I saw the slates. Do we have, so do, do we have three bids for this?
I did not get three bids for that.
I'm not sure how to handle that.
Well, one thing we've got to make sure is that you've got insurance workers coming to your...
Yeah, they all need to have that.
Oh, all of them, yeah. That's, that goes without saying.
I don't have a problem with it, but we don't have three bids. I know there's a guy in Shrewsbury. We're just going to catch slack if we don't have...
That's fine, just give me other names, because I called other people and I asked what they charged per slate, and it was more than that.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, we need to get other bids or, it's, so, and, and this is, well, let's not say what this is, I'll, I'm going to ask for...
Right, now, everybody has...
Let's not do that. Yeah.
And then, American Association of Sheet Metal Heating Air Conditioning Engineers.
Oh, I'm American Association of Sheet Metal...
Sheet Metal Air Conditioning Engineers, Refrigeration Air Conditioning.
All right, so that's...
They'll have a standard in there for air changes per hour for certain envelopes of buildings.
Yeah, I'll have to get that name for you.
So it sounds like...
One of my customers had a slate guy from Shrewsbury all the time, and I, I almost got the name on top of my tongue, but I can't find it in there. I'll get, I'll find out.
Okay.
And get it to you.
Okay.
And you know, the other person you might call to see if, who they use for slate is Smokey House, there's a lot of slate roofs. We should ask Jesse who they're using.
There used to be a guy that came over from New York State.
I know, we, I used to, I can't remember his name, but, yeah, because I had somebody that did the roofs for us every year when I was there, but it's, you know, 2009, it's a long time ago now. So, but Jesse would, I can't imagine, and I, I hope they're addressing this late every year, and I hope they have a name.
I only have one bid on the repointing work, and if you walk around this building, it's just amazing how much mortar is missing.
Well, yeah. Are we sure, though, that we want to repoint, that we, are we, I know you put the plum bob out, but are we absolutely confident that we don't have a larger issue with the wall, the cracked wall that needs to be addressed before we repoint that particular wall?
Bob is talking to the architect to see if, the, the architect never said that there is a problem. What the architect said was that he would like to do soil borings.
To find out.
At a cost of something like $30,000.
Yeah, okay.
And to my way of thinking, the building is 170 years old, it's not even an eighth of a bubble out of plumb.
It's been hit by an excavator.
It's been hit by an excavator, which caused extensive crumbling of mortar out from between the stones. The stones are not cracking, there's just missing mortar. I'm, I'm confident that we don't need to do soil borings.
Well, and this figure here, which, if we're going to look for another bid, I'm not going to say this figure out yet either, but if this figure here is for the entire building?
It is for the entire building. And we also have the policy of keeping the work as local as possible.
Yeah, yeah, provided it meets other standards.
Well, this fellow also did the work at the S.L. Griffith Library last year, which everyone, and I'm sure you saw it in Action Hall, was extremely pleased with, neat, clean, reliable.
So it strikes me that we aren't going to know if there's anything else wrong with that wall unless we do borings and that that can cost a fortune, and that, you know, it might come to pass that years down the road, we'll say, oh, boy, would have, could have, should have, but on the other hand...
Probably not going to be me or you saying that, or Paul.
Well, yeah, well, it wasn't, wasn't, wasn't us saying to make Parker Road a public highway either, but we're living with it. I don't want to saddle somebody down the road with those problems. But I guess I'm saying that looking at the range that this is, and if this is four walls, you know, divided by four, then it doesn't strike me that we're taking that greater risk for something that appears to be that, I mean, unlike the architect who saw the crack, but he didn't know the story behind what hit the wall. So he's assuming that there was settling, but we're not seeing any evidence of settling. Have you ever, yeah, so, so it seems to me that it might be a, a, a little risk, but not a huge risk compared to, well, that's where I'm leaning. But I think that what would be good is if we could find another mason to look at.
Yes, I, I emailed two other people, and I'm waiting to hear from them.
All right, so we'll, we'll hold on to that.
Okay.
And see what, what all the bids come in at.
Is that scheduled for, like, doing it?
This summer.
This summer, okay. Because it should be done before winter.
Exactly.
And I don't have a problem...
The carpenters that I've spoken to so far are not surprisingly saying probably not until November.
Sure.
But, you know, anybody who's good isn't just waiting for the phone to ring.
You haven't mentioned the testing we need to do in the attic.
Yes, and we have that form coming, and that is very inexpensive. It's something like $12.
Oh, I thought it was $200.
Mine was 36 bucks.
Okay. It's, yeah.
Had to see that, but things, yeah, it was 36.
Yeah, that's...
Asbestos. We need to be sure we don't have an abatement issue.
We have the form, and it's just that we have to send the check with it, and the checks get cut next Wednesday. So next Wednesday, I'll be gathering a sample with my mask and gloves and whatnot.
Yeah, we're hoping it's vermiculite, we're hoping it's not asbestos, but we don't know, and we better find out, because, and that will certainly add a lot to the cost of what we're doing if we have to do abatement, but we better know.
And I was, again, asked not to say the price, but Lanny Sendra is willing to give the town a very good price for doing the painting.
So, but again, we should get some competitive bids, just because that's policy, and I don't want to, you know, this is a big project, and I know, we all know him... So, but again, we should get some competitive bids, just because that's policy, and I don't wanna, you know, this is a big project, and, um, I know we all know him as a painter, and he's local, but there might be other people as well that want to, yeah.
Well, I've asked David King, he is not interested, and, um.
Well, we should probably post something, you know, um, maybe post something on Front Porch and put it in the news guide and, you know, put it out.
Well, I, I would rather not really put it in the news guide, that starts to get expensive.
Trying to remember what our policy says about, I know we want three bids, I don't think it says that.
I, I would rather just make phone calls.
Transportation things, we have to.
Twenty-five, is it three bids if it's over, what, twenty-five hundred?
But I don't think, I don't think we say that, I, I think it just says that we need to get three bids. I, I think the only time we really need to make sure that we have the canvassed advertising is when we're doing projects with grants, and then we have to be doing much, you know, full.
The other thing we need to do, um, before we can get the window in is move that water faucet, which the outside faucet goes through the window. So, do you know a plumber?
No. Oh, twenty thousand. I don't have a problem with either one of them bids then.
Okay.
Over twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So we can go ahead with?
No, we need three competitive bids, but we don't need them to be advertised.
It's rewritten quotes.
If it's over?
If it's under twenty thousand, three written quotes. If it's over twenty, then we need to go for competitive bids, so we need to then broadcast it widely. But, yes, so for a project of that scope.
So I have people coming on Monday, actually, and working on it. And I.
I can, I can check, but they're about six months out on plumbing.
Really?
Boy, they've got so many new homes, I can check, so maybe get one of the boys to come up and.
Okay.
Watch what you want, but I can't even get him up to my house.
Okay, well, then maybe we should call.
Well, so we need that done, but then the other thing, at some point, we do have to, I guess, one of our next needs, we've got to figure out what we're gonna do about the bathroom, right?
Right. Um, yeah, and I don't think that's such a big deal that we need to get bids on it, right?
No.
No.
I don't think that's, we'd be anywhere near, I think that's an hour's work.
Okay, will you, um, ask and let me know in the next couple of days?
Yep.
Thank you, Paul. The window vote stands?
Yes, window vote stands. And what.
If I don't get back with you, just kinda give me a.
Text.
Got too many things going here.
Yeah, I know that feeling. What, um, what did we work out, you and Bob work out for, um, reporting back to the select board of the, you're gonna be doing that monthly?
I'm gonna be the mouthpiece. You're gonna be the sounding board, and he's going to be the recorder and the statistician.
Okay, and we'll get reports monthly on the progress. Okay, great, great. And have you, uh, started purging some of the stuff around here, or have you, have you, okay? Is that going over okay with everybody?
It's going very well, and, um.
What, what Brad and I found in the attic was kinda scary. Yeah, okay.
Embarrassing. This building is pretty infested with mice. We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah.
Christmas decorations from nineteen fifty-two, et cetera.
And most of them that were paper, and so you can imagine what they now look like, you know? It's not like they were, like, fragile glass or anything like that. They were, yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was kinda smelly. Alright, thank you, Brad, and thanks, Bob, I know he's not here, but thanks, thanks. Sullivan and Powers audit proposal to be signed. So we did not sign this last time because I had wanted to make sure that, um, I had asked Dick Smith, since he had been our auditor, and he had issued the RFP in the first place, the request for the bids, the RFP, I guess, that I wanted him to read it over as well as myself to make sure that it aligns with the proposal that we accepted, and he felt it was right in keeping. I also asked Janice to get this to each of our auditors who had sat in on the discussion with us about this when we were choosing which company that we would go with, and I have heard nothing from any of them saying to the contrary, so I feel like they've had a chance to, to weigh in. So I wouldn't see any reason that we wouldn't go ahead and sign this, um, you know, letter of engagement with Sullivan and Powers. It is, um, I do wanna make sure that we, we did specify that they had to, to, to stall their start until after the first of the year, because we, at this point, heck, July's right around the corner, we're not really worried about it. We just, we knew we didn't have the, um, that we needed to go one more year out to add some money into that auditing kitty. And next time, we'll know that we need to budget more for an audit. We were budgeting on prices from ten years ago, and obviously, prices have gone up in ten years, so. So we just need a motion to sign the, uh, a letter of engagement with Sullivan and Powers so they can start.
No more, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it looks like we'll, there's room for three of us, and since we now form three, that's what we'll do. Wanting to say it's the fourteenth, not sure why. So discuss Gleeb lands. Oh, it looks like there's two copies of this, let's, let's sign them both, just makes sense, we would have one and they would have one. Gleeb lands. Well, that's a different issue. The fate of towns' lease lands, okay. Doug, are you up to date on the Gleeb land issue, or do?
Gleeb lands are confused with littler.
I know, Smokey House owns Gleeb lands, and we used to pay, yeah, we used to pay tax every year, thirty-six dollars, I remember, it's still here, yeah. And, and it's not, nobody could ever tell us where our Gleeb lands were.
It's land that was set aside for revolution by the Church of England.
Right, and it's.
By the King of England, to the proceeds to go to the church.
Church.
Yeah, or sends that to the schools now.
Right.
Right.
So all the Gleeb money goes to the school.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Gleeb properties.
Gleeb properties totaling ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
Yeah, what, what's the total?
Ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents they are billed for.
Yes, I know, it's, it's. It really is a vestige of history, isn't it? So, let me just see, I'm gonna peel off the article here. Yeah, it's, and, and, and.
It's a tax, and, you know, the rate was set way back for revolution, and it stayed the same, it's never gotten up. So some lands are only taxed at a dollar fourteen per year. It's like, it's not even worth the taxes.
Well, and I'm not sure it's even clear how much land is being taxed. I mean, does it ever, it ever identifies a parcel, per se?
You know, some of these have been split and subdivided and dissipated, because they used to be bigger than that.
Yeah, we, I, I, I did a little exercise looking for the Gleeb properties at Smokey House with our, and we had some pretty extensive surveys and things, but it's, it's kinda lost in history. I mean, it's a fun history, yeah. Let's just see what this, uh, so this looks like it's from the League of Cities and Towns. Gleeb lands, also known as lease lands, are a type of public land. The Supreme Court once called a somewhat unusual Vermont institution. I guess so. Many of the original charters for Vermont towns, uh, contained reservations of parcels of land for the Church of England, pre-revolutionary, just as Brad said, and for the use of schools, colleges, or the support of the ministry. After the American Revolution, the U.S. Constitution separated the church from the state. Lots reserved for the church or the ministry were generally dedicated to the use of schools, and the care of such land was placed in the hands of the respective town select boards. Vermont law defines Gleeb lands as lands in the town granted under the authority of the British government as Glebes for the use of the Church of England, and now by law granted to such towns for the use of schools and lands granted to the use of the ministry or the social worship of God, and lands granted to the first settled minister, interesting, first settled minister, and not appropriated according to law, and this is twenty-four VSA two four oh one. The town has a legal right to possess these lands, but the select board may also choose to rent or lease them for the town's benefit. So technically, there, yeah, for many years, it was understood that the towns could not divest itself of these public lands, but could only lease them. However, twenty-four VSA two four oh six authorizes town to sell these lands with two conditions attached. First, the leaseholder must be given preference as the grantee of the title. Second, the funds received shall be kept intact in trust, and the income shall be used for the purpose of which such lands were originally granted. Okay, the second condition means, for example, that if the town decides to sell a lot that was originally designated for a school for sale price of twenty thousand, this sum must be held intact as an endowment. Only the interest from it may be used, and furthermore, the interest must be used for school purposes. Many times, these ancient interests may only come to the town's attention because a title search between two parties reveals the age-old interest that is easily deeded away to clear title. Otherwise, the town would not have known about them. In two thousand seventeen, the Vermont Legislature passed an amendment with the presumable intention of making it easier for towns to rid themselves of these minor and sometimes meaningless interests in one blanket motion instead of tedious deed transfers that arise from time to time. The law now provides that the select board must vote in the affirmative to retain ownership of some or all of these lands within the town, um, by January first, twenty twenty. The various considerations for maintaining or transferring the town's interest in Gleeb lands will depend on the specific property. I guess I say it's all very property-specific. We strongly recommend that towns hire or engage legal counsel in this process as soon as possible. Town's attorney will be able to help develop an inventory of Gleeb lands. Some will be known, others will not, that's, I think.
They're known.
I, I don't think they're known, yeah.
Well, it seems like they're known, they've been billed.
Well, I.
Are they on the tax map?
I'm not sure they're mapped, and it's, the question is whether they can be found.
So we, I mean, they got the names on here for y'all, we don't know what chunk of land it.
It's actually whatever their parcel ID number is, it's that parcel.
I don't think so, because I know that with Smokey House, it came in in two hundred and some odd, or no, maybe it was forty or fifty parcels came in, and one of those parcels somewhere in there was the Gleeb, but, yeah, and one of those, yeah, yeah. But it wouldn't be all of Smokey House's land.
No, no.
And the same thing could be true for anybody else's if they ended up with.
If they added more.
Yeah.
Propagated.
Yeah.
So we could go build a church on it.
But we can't build a town office on it.
Could've wrecked.
The various considerations for maintaining or transferring the town's interest in Gleeb lands will depend on the specific property. We strongly recommend that towns, I read that already, the town's attorney will be able to help develop an inventory. Title searches performed by town's attorney, oh, this is gonna be expensive, will inform the select board's decision. In some cases, deciding to transfer the interest might be easy and quick as it represents minimal rights the town did not know about. I think that's our case. In other cases, the decision might be difficult because of a potential future use of the property. Either way, the initial step toward making these determinations must be inventorying the properties in town so that the select board can make an informed decision. Finally, the town might not have time to conduct this analysis before the twenty twenty deadline. In this case, the select board has the option of voting to maintain all the town's interests in Gleeb lands, and then determine on a case-by-case basis moving forward how it would deal with each one. Seems common sense. The inventory and discussion could continue beyond the deadline if the town votes to keep its interest in these lands. Then at a future time, the town can transfer ownership rights as needed. It's interesting, because I don't, I doubt very much that anybody on this list who's paying for Gleeb lands doesn't think that everything that's within their boundary belongs to them. I mean, they've been.
Exactly.
Well, what confuses me is it says the town can vote to maintain its interest.
Right.
What if we vote to not maintain our interest and sell our interest to these landowners for the sum of a dollar?
I, so I.
And then we're, we've cleaned up our record.
We've cleaned up our record-keeping, and, yeah, I mean, I, I, um, I, I don't think, thinking back on this, that, that, um, I don't think that the way this, well, I don't think it's gonna be, oh, suddenly that, you know, that actually, um, we really own Richard Palmer's property. I don't think that's true. Could be fun.
Nineteen dollars and sixty cents.
Yeah, just because he's got some Gleeb properties, and, but I don't think that it really means that the town of Danby actually owns his property and that he doesn't have a deed, because, so I think what we have to do is confer a little bit with John Thrasher, and my guess is that he's dealing with this with all the other towns he represents. So why don't we at least find out from him what he, we think the first step is? I'll just give him a call and find out where we go from here. But it's interesting, and anybody who pays Gleeb, and they would pay it annually, um, they, uh, if, they're, will, probably should, we'll, we'll be in touch with them, but they can also be in touch with us.
The amounts that are on there, or is that?
No, they pay us.
They pay to the town.
They pay us for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in addition to, yeah, so in addition to the tax for their property tax, which is the school rate and the town rate, they then pay this thirty-six dollars additional that comes to the town and gets sent to the school.
Smokey House.
Yeah, Smokey House does, and Woodwise is three dollars and fifty cents.
Right, there's a total of less than a hundred dollars, so I really don't wanna see us spend a whole lot of money having a lawyer research deeds.
No, and I mean, unless, you know, yeah, exactly, so I think that, well, let's find out, because I, I suspect that he's dealing with this all over because of this article, and I suspect he can give us some quick counsel. And if he says there's a larger issue here and more money involved than ninety-nine dollars, then we can revisit it. Does that sound?
Or you just keep your interest and keep going on with this rating.
And just charge for the lease, yeah.
Come up every year?
Every year, they get mail, it's a total separate.
It's a total separate tax bill.
And mail them out the first of the year.
Yep.
To these nine people.
Yeah, to nine people in town, yeah.
It's a royal pay.
This is the first for me, I'd never heard of it.
No, it's, it's, it really is, it really is a vestige of a long-ago time.
So now that stamps are fifty-five cents, you've got somebody like Woodwise that's gonna send us a check for three dollars.
Three dollars and fifty cents, and between the two of us, well, yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe we engage the person that's mender offenses, and they can look into it, a job that's gonna run.
Alright, so I will contact John and see if he has some, some quick and dirty how they're dealing with these things, or whether he thinks it's worth.
The British flag there.
Yeah, the British flag.
You did, Chuck.
Dump day prices. That's here someplace, ah, here. So with the exception of the refrigerator line, so this is, so Janice had given us some dump day prices. Refrigerators, twenty, couches and chairs, five, plumbing fixtures, three, appliances, five each, carpets, rugs, three, dining room chairs, wooden furniture, three, large tables, bureaus, three, mattresses and box springs, five, metal articles, three, tires, four, regular automobile size, more if they're giant. Computer parts and televisions that can be recycled at no cost, so there's no cost for those. We can't accept large amounts of building debris, that's important that people who are watching know that. This isn't a day to do demolition and get rid of it for free. Um, it's, um, we can't, also can't accept car parts, and what does this mean, that we can't accept household items? Aren't mattresses and dining room tables and things, aren't those household items? I'm not sure what that one means.
Stuff you can't sell at a tag sale.
I don't know what it means when we can't accept household items.
I think it's item by item when they come in, and we never had any complaints.
Yeah.
Over the previous years, so.
Our biggest problem was when people were doing demolition and, and came in, and then.
We got the option to turn away, which we have done.
People need to know that we can, we did have the, the situation, we do have a couple people in town who own multiple properties, and in that case, it made sense that they made multiple runs, because they were dealing with the, yeah, and they did. But, so, so there's a note here, is this from you, with the exception of the refrigerator line, I think the prices are too low. Three dollars involves making change and going through a lot of singles. I'd recommend five-dollar prices, and couches, ten. So the only thing I'd say is that having taken the money for a couple of years, the change wasn't an issue at all. I mean, we did, we just put in singles and.
No, they're just glad to get rid of it.
Yeah, and, and actually, a lot of them, a lot of them would, you know, yeah, yeah, so cha-change was not an issue, but, um, so the question is whether we think our prices are low. So you're thinking, like, for plumbing fixtures, it'd be?
I'm thinking anything that's three dollars should be five dollars.
So that would mean plumbing fixtures, carpets and rugs, and large tables and bureaus would go up. Oh, and metal articles like grills and lawn mowers and barbecues. So the flip side is I hear people talk, and I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other about this, so I'll let you guys argue it out. But, um, but I do think that Doug has a strong feeling, he's not here, but I think, and I know how he feels, is just that we don't wanna put prices so high that, you know, people don't utilize this. And I think it really comes down to, are we trying, is this a, a service we provide with taxpayers' money, and we, you know, um, uh, you know, we, we charge a little, but we take some out of taxes to pay for the service? Or is it something that we wanna charge enough that it's gonna cost less out of taxpayer money? And I think historically, we looked at it as a service. Was, was that what you're?
How did we do last year as far as breaking even? How did we do last year as far as breaking even?
As far as breaking even? Oh, boy. You had to ask that?
Well, roughly, I mean, I don't, I don't expect you to say...
I think the last two years, we've done better. I don't think we broke even, but we've done better.
Well, what is your recollection? Did we break even?
No, we didn't.
So I really don't think by upping these items two dollars, it's going to discourage someone one way or the other.
Well, it's not, I don't think we'll, it'll make us break even, and I guess that's what I'm saying, is I don't think that the goal is to, um, you know, I think it's okay to use some taxpayer money to provide a service for the town. So I don't think we need to say, oh, no, our prices have to make it so that it, you know, makes us whole.
I think the, the main thing, as long as the prices haven't gone up on, on us as far as the refrigeration parts, I don't know what they are getting...
For us to get rid of them.
For us to get rid of them.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Because then, yeah, it's twenty dollars here and...
Right. Right, if, if, if our disposal costs have gone, gone up, we should pass those along, maybe.
The only...
We have to lose a cost to road crew to pull a couch out of a ditch.
Well, I know. That's exactly the point, Chris. Yeah, exactly. And, um, and, and if we make costs too high, then, because for you or I, it's...
I wasn't suggesting changing the...
Okay, it cost, it cost us seventeen hundred dollars, and we brought in about nine fifty.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
So I think...
So we lost.
So we can say we lost, or we could say that we spent not, roughly nine hundred dollars to provide a service for the town, to, to...
Which they appreciate. I mean, they haven't mentioned about having two in a while since we've done it. So I think if we, I did have a couple of calls and emails on the date, which we should set right, or it's already set, but...
Yeah, we set the date.
It is on July twentieth. It's a Saturday. And, um, we'll probably keep, keep the prices pretty much what they, what they have then.
And, and we do rely on volunteers...
Volunteers.
...to help unload and to greet people, so anybody who wants to volunteer, please let us know. It's, it's a long day, sometimes a hot, dirty day, but a fun day. Yeah. Um, so I think we're all in agreement that we're, that our goal isn't to...
Make money.
...to make money, or to even, or to even say that it has to pay for itself. So really, what we want is, is, is prices that are going to, um, make it so that we don't untowardly lose money, because we have to pay to dispose of the stuff. We have to pay by pound to get rid of the things, and we have to pay. And we want to strike that balance, that we're getting some money in, but that we're not, um, making it too high, so that people who are low-income will say, yeah, but, you know, I, I just, I can't do that, so I've got it on my car, I'll just throw it over the ditch instead. So I don't know.
Well, my feeling is the minimum price should be five dollars.
For every item.
And I know my vote doesn't count, but I felt that same way for you. It just seems like it is smaller than it should be.
Yeah. Dump stickers are a lot lower.
For other towns and things.
And I know, as I've said from the audience in the past, over in Maine, where we have a little camp, they charge like five times the price of...
Oh, I know, I know.
Yes, and that's a little town of forty people, who is so far below the poverty level, it's not funny.
Plumbing fixtures, I'm trying to remember, you know, so when, when we sat there and, you know, taking the money, you know, a truck comes in, and you sort of walk around the truck, sort of start adding it up, you know, three here, five there, you know? And, and the reality is that, yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, and, and sometimes there's, there's two half of an appliance, you know, instead of one whole appliance, and you kind of just say, well, that equals one. It's not an exact science.
Couch for no questions.
Yeah.
Well, um...
The other thing, I mean, we can try it and...
Why don't we, why don't we shoot for it, and if we find out our ditches are all filled up, we'll send Brad up with my truck, and he can pick it up.
Well, we've got another, we've got another problem with an area that's being used as a dump that Lynn and I are not very happy about.
Yeah, we've got to do something about that. Well, let's not mention it, because it might encourage other people, but we got to...
Our prices are low, and dump stickers, I hate to say this, but they, they should go up a little bit. I mean, it's a fifty-cent giveaway, basically. Uh, if you go to Wallingford or anything, it's punch tickets, and the minimum is, they get a fifty-dollar punch card with their taxes, and, um, just for a little thirteen-gallon bag, you're paying four to five dollars. Big ones, you're paying eight to ten. And that's just not Wallingford, it's everywhere. So, I mean, people have gotten away with it, but...
Well, the problem is if we get too low, we have, that's why we had to adjust before, is that then we had people bringing us their trash.
Yeah.
And that's not, doesn't work economically.
And we have had, just Charlie, somebody from dumped the bag in here on Tuesday...
Oh.
From Dorset.
Hmm.
So turned it over to the sheriff.
Yeah.
So don't know if it was one of our people bringing trash from Dorset, throwing it in, but...
Yeah.
I told him let the Sheriff Department handle it.
Yeah.
Why don't we do a compromise?
What do we got?
Try it one year, go up, go up to four? Or, I don't know, five to me is not, not that bad, but...
It's just easy to go five, ten, fifteen, instead of having, you know, the odd amount in there.
What do you think, Jer?
It's, it's hard, guys. I'm just so acutely aware, because I work with so many really low-income families that I, you know, I, I know, and, and I know it's how people prioritize, you know, it's not like they, you know, don't have money for other things.
Have to pack cigarettes.
I, I, I know, but I also know that I, that, that the, the garbage, you know, one thing that this, on, on a related topic, I have been wondering about whether we want to put into someplace some sort of ordinance about, um, a fine for littering, because we are having a problem in some places, and it's construction debris that people are leaving on the...
About what I've found over the years, and other than catching them red-handed, is they won't prosecute, not unless you're on video.
Yeah. Well, what I've used to, yeah, what I found...
They don't get out of it usually.
When I had problems with it, when I was at Director at Smokey House, um, we were able to find out who, um, with help from the sheriff, and, and then what we did is we, we didn't prosecute, but we had the sheriff visit them and, and say, you got X number of days to have it cleaned up, or you will be, and they cleaned it up. So it ended up at least not being our problem. So, um, but that's, it's construction debris that we're seeing, so...
And then on the other hand, if, if the prices, you know, that are bringing a lot of stuff, and I think we did it once or twice last year, is we sent them to, um, Casellas. A lot of times, a truckload of debris.
Yeah, if they, if they come in and, and it's debris that's not appropriate for us that day, they, we send them to Casellas, which is where they have, and then they have to pay a lot more.
So maybe that was meant, that's what that no household...
I don't know. Household items is strange.
I think it should say no construction debris.
Yeah, we can't accept large amounts of building debris, we've got that, and I don't know what household items. I mean, to me, carpets, rugs, plumbing fixtures, to me, those are household items, so I'm, I'm confused by that. Do you, do you have any thoughts about that? What, I mean, I don't know why it says household items. What, you know, what we should ask is Janice, if she knows, she might know what...
Well, we got till, um...
Yeah.
Through our next meeting, but...
Well, we're gonna want to pump the, post the, the thing. Well, you know, I, I mean, if you two feel it should be five, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not going to argue with you. You know, we can try it at five and, and, uh, you know, we can see. You know, it's...
I hate to say this, but if you got it at five, the ones that can basically afford it, and we, we were here firsthand the last four years, three years.
Yeah.
And sometimes you can cut somebody a break if it's, I hate to say that.
I think that's perfectly fine.
I, I've done it over the years, because I, I had one lady that was getting down into change, and she was lacking, matter of two dollars, and I'm like...
Exactly.
You brought it all here, that's fine.
That's, that's just common sense.
And the truth is, there, there's, there's some fun things that happen those days. Like, I've seen people say, ah, you know, I'll pick up theirs, you know, for them as they come through. It's a nice community act.
You can trade the old bicycle for...
Yeah, well, and all you have to do is...
I got a nice Larry Bird poster last year.
There you go.
That's right, you did.
Damn good on them.
That's right, that's right. Well, um, so...
Hey, I know, we'll go flexible five.
There, I like that.
I, so that puts a lot of pressure on the people taking the money, though. So I, I think, I don't think that, I think we should say it's five, the expectation is five, and, and...
Okay, let's go with five, and nobody shows up.
Yeah. So everything's five, except tires that are four, and, um...
Tires, we always lose money, because we have to send a truck.
Tires should be five also. I said a minimum of five, so...
Oh, okay.
No threes or fours.
Okay.
That's, that's a big loss for us when we take tires up.
Yeah, tires are the loss.
Yeah, and we get up there, and they want, they call down, they say they want us to unload them by hand.
I know.
Does anybody recall, I'm trying to think what I had to pay, and I, I'm not recalling it, when I just had new tires put on, and they, they don't even ask you anymore whether you want...
They charge you.
Yeah, they just charge, and it...
Yeah.
Oh, mine, mine were good enough to be, I mean, I just saw a winner, and I, mine were still...
It used to be four, four or eight dollars, I can't remember what it was, but the recycle, because I just had some done, and I, I just do it so often, I, I can't remember what was on there. I'd say five on the tires, because that is a, well, let's just do five, and then with the other, you know, the refrigeration and stuff like that.
So twenty for refrigeration, five for everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the couches are ten, right?
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see what happens. Can't wait to send you out to pick up those couches.
Stop. I just put my couch up by the road with a free sign, and it's gone in an hour.
Okay, um...
Is that gonna get published on the front porch?
The prices, yes, we will publish them on the front porch, yes. Absolutely. That's why Janice had given it to us, as she's anxious to do it. It's July twentieth on a Saturday, and I, I think we have...
I'm not sure if it's gonna be hazardous.
I'm not sure either. I think it is.
Usually hazardous waste is here from eight to ten only.
Right.
So...
If hazardous is gonna be here, it gotta be early, yeah. Don't, I've made that mistake, I've loaded up all my stuff and gotten here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not fun. Okay, so other business to come before our board?
Now I can, uh...
Other business.
Uh, review the, uh, delinquent tax policy here, collection policy. This is sort of, so to speak, this is, uh, seems to me like it's the initial phase of uh, delinquency on taxes, property taxes.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no, I'm trying to portray to the board that there should be some type of detailed procedure for after the town acquires a property, or what happens to the property, you know, after the...
So what you're saying is disposition of town-owned properties.
Right.
That, yes, and also the, uh, initial advertising of a foreclosed, uh, property.
So...
To, to, to make it a wider berth of, uh...
So I think we're talking about almost three different processes, just to be clear. So the first one is when it goes, um, when it goes up for tax sale, and that is when the delinquent tax attorney handles all of that, right? Advertises that it's going to be, there's going to be an auction, it's going up for sale. So that's the first step in the process. Then, people come, and they, um, and, and you're suggesting, and I heard your suggestion, that we might want to talk to that, that delinquent tax attorney to say, can we add electronic advertising to that pool too? Uh, which I think is fine. And then we would, um, then what happens is that it, the properties go up for bid. Those usually happen at ten o'clock in the morning here in this office, um, it's been advertised. So if whoever bids on the property, who's the successful bidder, the, the high bidder, um, many times the properties go for just what's owed. But if, um, if, uh, if nobody, so, so bidders come, the Select Board would have already decided that if nobody bids, which properties would we be willing to bid on? And pretty typically, as long as there's value there, so that if we bid on it, we could sell it, and we'd still get our value back without losing money on cleanup or something else that needs to be done.
Is that what happens? The town actually has to bid on the, to acquire it?
Yes, that's the process.
No one bids.
Well, what happens if the town did it and no one bid?
So then it, it just sits there, and the town doesn't get money, and the people still own it, and that's, that's been, that's kind of the issue, if you don't have to leave the tax sales.
But see, that should be, that should be in the, uh, policy, the detailed, uh, policy.
That was the old policy from years ago, and that's why we had people for twenty years that owe taxes, no pressure put on them.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily a policy, it was just a practice, it was a practice, yeah.
The practice, right, but I'm saying it should be set in stone for, not just now, but, you know, one thing in life is change.
Help, help me say it again, what it is you think should be set in stone?
Uh, you know, the procedure if, uh, the town shall, if nobody bids, shall put in a bid for the property.
So, so that is, that's, that's something that we decide on a case-by-case basis, and you saw, and that's our, that's our policy, is we decided on a case-by-case basis, as we just did tonight. So those things are, are, you know, are all part of a public meeting, it was warned on the, you know, on the agenda, and, and on a case-by-case basis, we decide whether we would, we would bid on it. We only are authorized, and, and our motion should reflect this.
What's the parameters for that?
That's what I was gonna say, I'm not sure if our motion did reflect this, and we should amend that if we need to. Um, we are only authorized to bid up to the amount that is delinquent, correct? Is that, do I?
Yeah, that's how I'm.
Yeah, I'm just, am I using the right words for that?
Yeah. That's all you're bidding before.
Yeah, you could. No, that's not a sense of, because the town can only get back, even if sells the property, can only get back its tax.
Exactly. So, so then, so then what would happen is that if somebody else buys it, then at that point, the town's out of it. If the town buys it, then they're in the same position that the other person buying it, which is that then you have a year that to redeem the property, the, the person who has lost it for delinquent tax sale. They have a year to redeem it. So, so there's no transfer of property, there's no deed transfer for a year. At the end of the year, if there has not been, if they haven't redeemed it, so if they haven't come forward and paid and, and then they would just keep, keep their property, then at that point, the delinquent tax um, attorney um, does the deeds and take, basically takes the deed and switches the deed over to the new person. By the way, the reason some people, lots of people show up and bid on these properties is that um, even if the person redeems, you get something like ten percent a month.
You get one percent interest per month.
One percent, yeah, it's like, so it's like a ten, so it's a pretty good return actually on your money. Yeah, so your money, if, if you were to, to bid and you had to wait the year, your money gets held in escrow uh, by the attorneys and you're guaranteed an interest rate that is actually.
Man, where is that all written though? I haven't, you know.
In state law.
It's law.
It's all law. It's all state law, yeah. Yeah, it's all, it's all, that's all state law. And so then um, then the next stage in the, in the process would be that if the um, persons who's lost their property doesn't redeem it and if the town did buy it because there were no other bidders, then the next thing is that the town would then go through the process of putting it up for sale. And, and we um.
That's where I'm saying that the town should stipulate how it's uh, put up for sale.
So we have very strict things, so we haven't actually, we haven't, so the property that you're interested in, we haven't actually put, we haven't actually sat down to say, how are we going to put this up for sale?
I'm not really interested. Someone I know was interested and I was.
So does somebody you know. Give them the information.
Overall, I had no idea and it should be, I, you know, it's just.
So, so it's really helpful to have you come and ask. What's hard is when you come and say what should, should, should be without knowing first what is. Do you see what I'm saying?
But it should be.
Uh, should, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to teach you to be a little more diplomatic, Don.
Right, right. Well, well, you know.
I'm just trying.
I know, I, I'm not saying it should, but.
Well, you are, I mean, should, should.
Shall, no, it wasn't a shall, shall is a definite, should is a suggestion.
But I, uh, but, but I'm suggesting to you that, that you ask first what the policies are before you tell somebody what should be because I think.
I'm here to clarify.
Yeah, well, that, that's, I love that word, come and ask to clarify.
But also, now, where, where the problem comes in, it's not stipulated after the, a town acquires the property, uh, how it's um.
No, that, that's, no, 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 that's also done by law, that's also done by law. And when we, when we advertise it, we have to, so let's see if I can remember this process because we haven't done it in a while. We, last time we did it with Silas Griffith, right, over and over again. Um, so, and we also did it for the uh, property on Baker, um, on the Brook Road. Um, so what happens then is that um, we, um, the town has to um, town puts it up for sale. The minimum sale amount that we're allowed to, to, to ask for is, I think I'll get to your point. And if I don't, then.
No, I'm saying, how does the town put it up for sale? That's the sticking point.
First we have to, so, so we're allowed to ask for all the money that was missing from our tax coffers, plus we're allowed to recoup the cost to us of the transaction. So, so at the time of the sale, we're also, our lawyer fees and things like that, we can recoup. So that we're, the town's made whole. And um, and then how we put it up for sale is that it has to be advertised. Um, it has to be advertised according to all the state statutes that say, so in at least three different locations, blah, 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 and there's no reason we can't make sure we add front porch to it, but we advertise them widely. Um, and so, so we haven't sold anything, just so you know, since the Baker Brook property. So it's not like this happens very often. We sold the, the Brook Road property, I mean, we sold, we sold.
We sold.
Silas Griffith and Brook Road.
Timothée Road property?
Nope, that, that guy bought the town's bid before the redemption period ended.
Yeah.
Wow.
See, I didn't get it.
If the town ends up being the, the bidder on a property, anybody can come to the town and say, I'd like to buy your bid before the redemption period ends.
Mm-hmm.
They can, they can just say.
They just take over the debt.
That doesn't sound too.
They don't get the interest.
They don't get the interest.
They don't get that interest.
No, no, but I'm saying the process of them coming to the town and saying, I want to take over.
Well, it's become the public process, the law.
Sometimes banks discover that they had an interest in the property.
Yeah. And, and, and if they do that, it comes to a public meeting. It comes to a public meeting, it's warned in an agenda and then we would discuss whether or not we would be willing to sell it to them.
There's a motion, everything.
Yeah. So it's not like it's, it's not like it's done behind the scenes or anything.
Well, you know, I came in here initially to the meeting and people were discussing like, we have so much, what was the other property besides the Sherrill?
So, but those are, that's a different, that's a different stage.
Brother lined up or wanted to.
So this is, this is a.
There's something, something, you know, mysterious about the process, you know, that. And, and a manner of, of speaking like, why not just put it with a real estate agent and say,
That one was advertised for a year.
It was, that's right.
They couldn't sell it.
They couldn't sell it.
They had that advertised.
Which, which property was that?
So.
What, Ironman?
Yeah.
Was advertised online or was advertised realtor? It was advertised in the.
Uh, Donald, it's a landlocked property with other family owners owning the land around it. It's a very problematic piece for anybody else to buy.
Here we go, I'm just talking about the process.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, 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 that the only reason something like that hasn't immediately, you know, gone out is that, that it's um, because it's already been on the market for a year. So it's not like, you know, so it, but at this juncture, looking at, okay, we now own it, how might we transfer ownership to somebody else? The, the most likely person is a family member in that case.
And it's been advertised for a year for the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, right. Right. And, and it's also kind of a, a courtesy. We had a family member that was interested, this is a family compound. You know, so before we go out and put it on the market and sell it to somebody outside the family and create a public, we want to reach out to the.
Sometime a little unethical there, you know, to me.
My opinion. You're talking about a family compound, you're talking about no right of way, a landlocked piece of property. It's pretty complicated. You're also talking about a divorce settlement and there might be other issues.
There were other issues, yeah. Not to mention a hundred goats.
Two banks that walked away from it.
Right.
The twenty-five thousand, they walked away from it. Banks did, so it's like.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, the procedure should be uh, stipulated in uh, in detail after the town acquired the property, how it's um.
So, so that is by law stipulated and we, so our attorney does it after we acquire in terms of how we put it up for sale. And then the other thing is that we have to, once we determine the price that we're going to ask, um, um, so.
You don't know the law that's under, or do you know?
I don't know, but I can find out for you. Yeah, I can find out for you, I'd be happy to. But the other thing is that we have to provide, I think it's a, we have to list for thirty days, we have to say, well, when, when we get an offer on the property, we then can't accept that offer without going to the public, posting it in three places, saying that we have an offer for X amount and the public has thirty days to say whether we, to, to, to give their voices to whether we can accept that offer. The reason for that is that um, so let's say the Silas Griffith, let's use that as an example. Um, based on its assessment, that was worth, you know, a, a, a lot of money, you know, that was, you know, one would look at that building and think that could be a two or three hundred thousand dollar, you know, building based on what it had been assessed at. But at this point, it had been, you know, diminished in, in quality, um, you know, it had fallen apart for so many years.
What's the business aspect of uh?
Well, we, we, we tried to sell it at all, uh, uh, I think we started at two hundred and we, you know, we tried and tried to sell it for a year. And finally, what happened is that we did have a firm offer at, I think it was sixty-seven thousand dollars or something, I can't remember, seventy thousand.
Seventy-five.
Yeah. And so, so townspeople might have looked at that and said, holy smokes, you've got this asset that's worse than, you're giving it away to, 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 somebody and oh, and you know, gee, is that somebody a friend of yours or something? You know, it has to do with being open and everything. So what we have to do is we have to post it to say that we are, you know, planning on bidding and accepting this bid and people have thirty days to say, no, we don't, we feel that town asset shouldn't be letting go for so little. So it's, it's, you know, and so then after that thirty days posted, then we can vote to accept that, yeah, if we want. And that is the authority of the select board because we're elected into the position and somebody has to make the hard decisions. And in a case like that, that was a tough decision. None of us wanted to not get more money for that, but we had tried and tried and tried. And we were now paying money out to keep it from falling down.
That's a lot of money to go through that three-year process or whatever.
I mean, yeah, I, I concur that that's a, you know, the proper way to deal with that property and so forth.
Well, that's how we deal with all properties, is what I'm saying.
All I'm saying, I'm, I'm stipulating that, all I, I believe, what, what should happen for the people of Dambie is that there's a set policy of, you know, it should be written in.
So have you, have you heard me? It's in the law and it's.
Right, right.
Okay, so not it should be, it is, and I'll be happy to get you a copy of that.
All right. And it should be is not shall.
Okay, let's uh, let's move on to this here.
Okay. Does anybody have any other business?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we retain an auctioneer to sell the Dambie Fourth Corners Town Hall at absolute auction with a minimum bid of twenty thousand dollars.
Um, I would like to suggest.
Well, first we have to see if there's a second or not.
Oh. Now, that's the easy way, we just don't second it and then, because I was going to suggest we take this up at the next meeting, but.
I agree in selling it, but um, price, I mean.
Wait, do you second it?
I second it.
Okay, good. Then we can discuss it. Just have to do the process.
Nope, I, I, it's just sitting there. Just sitting there, so.
Deteriorating.
We did have offers, but they, I don't know what happened to them, but they kind of went away, but. I'd say any reasonable offer, because it is, as far as I'm concerned, it is no use to the town. We have no access to get in and out of the place because it's owned right up to the, within three to five feet on both sides.
So, the only thing I would say is, so you're setting a twenty thousand dollar minimum.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Um, I'm, I think that it's worth looking in to see if an auctioneer would take it with a twenty thousand dollar minimum. My guess is we're going to find out they won't because they didn't on the Silas Griffith, remember? Remember there, there was, um, I mean, it wasn't twenty, but remember there, there was, auctioneers had very specific things that they sort of were insisting that they would get out or they weren't going to cover it. Do you remember that?
Yeah, but I thought it was even more than twenty.
Well, but that was a building worth a heck of a lot more.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm just, I think we might find that, 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 that they won't do it. And then my only, my only thing about the Four Corners and I, I'll, say this because I, I feel strongly about it. I know that townspeople voted to sell, it's an asset to the town. That building's an asset and it does have value.
Twice they voted.
And, and they voted to sell it, but nobody voted to give it away. And.
Thank you, Don.
I think, thank you, Don. Bye, Aldonna. Um, nobody voted to give it away, they voted to sell it. It's an asset. And I take very seriously our responsibility to not give away an asset. And I agree with Paul that right now it's a problem property um, in that, you know, we have problems with parking and, um, and, and problems with septic, um, and, you know, other things. Life is long and those problems could change. It could change by buying some property adjacent or across the street from it. It could change by widening the road and creating parking. It could change, you know, it, it, we, there are other options um, that could be looked into. And, but I agree, people voted to sell it and if, if we're selling it for anything, you know, what it, the asset's worth, then I think that that makes sense. And, and it might be twenty thousand, I'm not arguing with your figure, I'm willing to consider what, whatever the figure is, I, that may be the figure. But um, but to just give it away for nothing, I don't think it really is costing us. Well, I guess what I'm saying is that um, in the past, the only buyers that were interested were the adjoiningers and I've had conversations with the adjoiningers and they're not interested now. Um, but again, life is long and it doesn't mean they won't be interested in the future. It doesn't mean that we couldn't figure out something else there. But right now, I'm not sure that anybody else would buy it. And so I think that if you say the highest offer, I'm afraid if the highest offer is a thousand bucks, I would say I'm not doing the fiduciary responsibility to the town's assets. And I would want to go back to people and say, did you really mean you wanted to give away a sixty thousand dollar asset for one thousand dollars? Is that really what you intended? Because I think what they intended is to sell it for what the, a, a building they thought would be worth, as opposed to just getting rid of it. Because I know we say it's deteriorating, but it's actually not costing us. Ri- right now, it's not like it's a big cost to us to keep it.
Going to get any more money for it if we let it sit there deteriorating any longer.
Well, I, so I think that to, to, to uh, talk to an auctioneer and to see, you know, but I, I think that that's fine if they, they, you know, if they take it with some sort of minimum. I think we need to think about what the minimum is, you know, in terms of the, you know, the te- value of the asset. Do you know what we um, assess that at for the town? Do we assess that?
No, I don't. No, we don't assess.
Don't assess.
Is there been a change in ministry at the church?
Yeah, there is.
Well, but actually, I think there's nobody there now, right? There was a change, they built that whole new and that, yeah, I know, it's been kind of sad. I, I don't think they have anybody new coming in immediately.
The other owner on the other side.
I, last I spoke, you know, I can check again, but last I spoke, neither of the adjoiningers were, were interested.
The problem with the building is years ago, pretty much you could park between uh, Town Hall and the church. Uh, that gave you some parking, you parked alongside the road, you know, whenever they had doings up there. But all they got to do was say no parking and you'd be lucky you get two cars parked legally.
No, but we could, we could, there's, we could, you know, we could park, we could make that road, it's a wide straight stretch, people could park along the side of the road, that's what people did. Um, it's, would be possible if we thought that, you know, again, you know, so it is a building that is um, uh, uh, a, a, a place that can be, uh, you know, um, it's large enough to be a meeting space for our community and we don't have many of those. And, and I think it's fine to sell it and then use that, those assets that we get from selling it to put into other resources for the community. Right, like here, yeah. I think that's great. But, but if really what happens is that right now, because we're sort of locked in this position, you know, and we don't know how long a church is going to be there, you know, we don't know how long, I mean, life is, you know, I, to, to give it away, I, I, is what I'm, and I'm not saying that that's what would happen and I think to look, have an auctioneer take a look at it and see. But um, but if they say, we're not going to do it with any sort of minimum because we don't think there's going to be that much and they don't want to waste their time and there's not a minimum, then I, I, I'm not sure that we don't need to go back to the voters. Because I think it's a different question, do you want to sell the asset when the expectation is that they're going to sell the asset for something near its value versus do you want to give it away for nothing when maybe there, there is potential for it to still be a community asset, but once we've given it away, it's gone. Now, that's my only thought on it.
Well, my other thought would be that uh, we decree that the Gleeb Land owned by Smokey House is adjacent to the Town Hall.
I know that won't work. Wherever it is, it's not there.
No, we'll go with Teconic and Green and maybe they'll give us a dollar for it.
Maybe.
We'll go to where?
Teconic and Green.
What's Teconic and Green?
They gave us a dollar for.
They gave us a dollar for Courier School.
Oh, they don't exist anymore. You mean the Teconic Foundation?
Teconic and Green.
Yeah.
It's Teconic and Green. Oh, the Teconic and Green. Oh, 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 oh.
You don't remember that they gave us a dollar for the Courier World School and property?
Yeah.
That was a giveaway.
Yeah, that was a giveaway.
Yes, but it, it's still in our community and it's still our community asset because we are a member of Teconic and Green, right? Yeah, that's a different kettle of fish.
Maybe they don't want it.
Yeah.
Okay, so on our motion.
So I, I would say that to um.
Can we check in? Is there anybody that would come look at it and say, especially once they know there's no access basically? What do you think you could get for the building?
Yeah.
Well, I think the thing to do is.
Hopefully, maybe the church.
Talk to the auctioneers and see what.
Yeah.
I would say, we know that there's at least two auctioneers we've talked with before. Um, I would say to have them each come in and tell them what, what, and, and hear what their proposals would be on it. I'm fine with getting the proposals. I just, you know, I just want to state upfront that if it, if it really means that, you know, it's best offer and that, you know, we don't have a minimum, then I, I'm not sure that's really what the townspeople had intended. And, and I'm not sure it's wise.
Because it's still got sentimental value to a lot of, a lot of people.
And it has physical value because we could, so I know this sounds crazy. It has physical value.
Someone could buy it and I'm sure the salvage value is at least ten thousand dollars.
So, so, all right, so let's say they'll pay us ten thousand dollars for it. Is that, you know, is, is that a responsible, you know, did, that's really basically a giveaway for a building like that. Is that what we wanted to?
I don't think that's a giveaway for a building that has all of the um, land problems that that does. It has a septic on, not on its own land, it has a well that may or may not be on its own land, it has virtually.
I don't think it has a well, does it? Like still have a spring from up on.
No, it has a shared well.
Does it have a shared well? Um.
Yeah, we're getting into.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying an absolute auction, which is cut bait.
Well, and, and that's what, what I'm saying is I disagree that it's an absolute auction cut bait unless the price is high enough that we feel that we're not giving away an asset. And, but let's find out what they say before we, there's no point in arguing about the dollars until we know what the dollars are. Um, and let's see if, I, I, I would be pleasantly surprised if an auctioneer would, would take it um, with that minimum. I'm afraid they might not because they're not going to want to do all that work and then not have any bidders.
Well, to get back to the, you know, the church, if, originally if they were going to buy it and use it as a community for their own use or even rent it out to get some of the money back, so.
When, when I last talked, so, so the minister who was there um, previous to the one that just came and then left, um, he had indicated interest when we were at, when we were at the polls one time, he approached Paul and I and indicated interest and I followed up with him three times and, you know, they're, I, I, I just don't think that they had the pocket to do it and I'm not sure. Um, I mean, they have a lot of asset of their own to take care of. Um, and so, you know, that, so I just, yeah, I don't. But I do think that there, there are, there are lands in the vicinity that could come up for sale, that could provide parking, you know. Um, in terms of septic, it's not currently on that property, but it's, um, I don't, you know, but the property that it's on, um, you know, which I believe is Smokey House property, um, since it's been there, would they let us replace the system there? You know, have we had that conversation? So it's possible to have a septic again, it's possible to have parking, whether, you know, it's out on the road, you know, on the other side.
We're repeating ourselves.
Yeah, I'd agree. So, um.
Hate to put stuff on the back burner, but this is, you're getting into a touchy subject, but, you know, nice if we could sell it or somebody would use it, but right now, nobody's used that place in what, five, six, eight years?
We've had it closed down for at least five. Yeah. Yeah, we've had it closed down for five, but before then, I don't think it was used because of the problems.
I mean, it's not hurt nothing, it's not cost them, it's nothing, so.
But to look in to say, to find out that is, you know, if there's an auctioneer who feels, because I, I, I like that you came up with a minimum, you're thinking in terms of not totally giving it away either. Um, and, um, and, you know, twenty thousand is at least something we could, you know, if they said they thought we could get that, I think that's a number that we can then vote on and decide whether we want to, you know, take that number, but we won't have anything to vote on unless we ask. So I think to reach out to the um, auctioneers and find out, you know, what they think. It'd be important to make sure that they get all the filings, the surveys and all the information about its various.
Attributes.
Attributes, that's right. That's right.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Well, there's a motion on the floor right now.
Right. And there's a motion to reach out to the two, although I can't make the motion. Did you make the motion? You did, so we need to second.
Paul may, I believe, and I second it or vice versa. Who, would you restate?
There's a motion that you made that said, contract an auctioneer to auction the property for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so I'm going to, I, I'm going to say that um, I'm not comfortable with saying contract an auctioneer.
No, contact.
Yeah. Contact. An auctioneer to, 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 to get their advice, um, and.
See if it's selling.
Estimates, yeah, on whether we could sell. Is that, can you live with that?
Yeah, I accept that.
So we have a new motion?
An amended motion.
Mm-hmm. So the amended motion is to contact an auctioneer. So the amended motion is to contact an auctioneer, auctioneers...
Yes.
To see... To obtain a recommended minimum bid for that property.
Yeah, to see if they'd be interested in auctioning it and, and what minimum bid we could establish.
There you go.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. So that's the motion, you second?
I second it.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? There you go. All right.
Paul, you have a motion.
Yes, Paul, please give us your motion.
Oh, I make the motion, we adjourn.
Yay!
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.